One.
It's America.
Nope, the mayor is busy today at a K nine retirement out at McConnell Air Force Base. So for the time being, I am in the concentration of power in the city of Wichita. But let's go ahead and get started and Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one proclamation and one person on the public agenda. And a reminder, the person on the agenda is going to talk about fireworks. And you're going to receive a presentation on the 28th regarding what happened this past year and any proposed changes to the ordinance based on what happened. So that's all on page one. On page two, number one, under new council business, this is an item we talked about last week. It's the five-year property tax abatement extension for Spirit. Spirit invested after you approve the first five years, they invested a billion dollars, over a billion dollars in their facility, created an ROI for the city of 4.88 to one and exceeded their job target by 2019. However, that they lost ground when the pandemic hit and also because of the pause in the 737 Max production. That's all I have on page two. On page three, number two is approving the sponsorship and provision of in-kind services for Riverfest. This is an annual allocation of resources. Number three is initiating the design process for the new wayfinding system in downtown. Number four is approving $275,000 for structural inventory of the city's bridges. Number five is approving the submission of a grant application for the study and design of improvements to Kellogg and Eisenhower, excuse me, the Kellogg and Eisenhower Parkway interchange area. Number six is approval of the leasing of a temporary dehumidification unit at the ICE Center. And that report also gives you an update on the permanent repair work that's being done. Page four, number seven is approving the sale of $32 million in water and sewer utility revenue bonds. You'll learn from our presentation, we had very competitive bidding climate. I think we had 10 bidders and real tight bid results at the top. That's all I have on page four. Page five, just highlight, you've got two council member travel items. Page six, I don't have anything. Page seven, highlight number six, this is a grant from the Department of Children and Families in the maximum amount of $516,400 to fund operating costs at eight recreation community and resource centers. And Mr. Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, I see we have early on to some update. Go ahead, Marley.
Hi, everybody. Hope you're having a good Friday. It is crazy here in Topeka. We have one more week before turnaround week, which means the House and Senate are trying to hear all the bills that they have in committee. Just a few items up for, up on the agenda next week that the city of Wichita will be weighing in on. First of all, the state water plan, House Bill 2302, Wichita will be supporting that bill. House Bill 2329, the carrying of firearms during a drug sale. WPD will be weighing in on that bill as well as the scrap metal renewal bill that will be up for hearing on Thursday. We did weigh in last week on a bill, we opposed a bill eliminating the three-mile radius, the planning radius for the city. There was a hearing on that as well. One item that will be worked next week is Senate Bill 47. This is a bill that was brought forward last session that banned local municipalities from putting in place plastic bag bans, but it has been expanded this year to include consumer products. And consumer product is defined very broadly. And the reason it was brought forward was because the city of Wichita was looking at possibly a ban on the sale of puppies. So the business community wanted to ensure that local communities could not do this. And so they have Senate Bill 47. They are going to work that bill in the Senate Commerce Committee on Tuesday. There are several exemptions in the bill and we are working with the city attorney's office to see if there are other exemptions that we could put in statute to narrow the consumer, the consumer goods exemption, or the consumer goods definition, such as dangerous animals and other items like that. I know that there are probably some emails going around about that and I just got off the phone with Senator Ware talking about that. She is on the Senate Commerce Committee. So lots going on at the State House. Turnaround week is upcoming, but I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, any questions?
So are, does local control not matter to the folks that support this bill?
They want to be sure that legal products are able to be sold all across the state.
So they support Delta Eight being sold all across the state and that would stop some folks from trying to regulate that?
They, they support legal products being sold across the state, so.
I will send you a letter with my thoughts that I would like to be shared with those on the committee.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I will agree with my colleague here. If there's anything I can do to speak out on this bill as well, just let me know. I have thoughts.
The two, the two Wichita legislators on the committee, Senator Erickson is chair of the committee and Senator Ware is on the committee. And they will work the bill on Tuesday. So if you're able to contact either one of them before then, just to narrow it back down, that would be helpful.
All right, any further questions? All right, thanks for your time, Marley.
Thank you.
All right.
Vice Mayor, our presentation, departmental presentation this month is library. And so Jamie Nix is going to give you an update.
And I recommend everybody to be quiet while the main librarian is presenting.
Councilwoman, I hope I was live, I have to make a ruckus, actually. I'm kind of curious, can I get some tech support? I'm so sorry.
Tyler, if you're listening, could you come in?
There we go, sorry. Yeah.
Thanks for the invitation to share with you some updates about the Wichita Public Library. I hope through the course of this presentation, you hear full stories about people, places and things, but also that things are expanding into more ideas that the library is bringing into the foreground for how it plans and delivers its services. Some quick performance framework for you. We were open over 17,614 hours last year across seven locations. More than 52% of Wichitaans have library cards. That's incredible in our industry. However, in the next 10 years, I hope it's 75. That's my personal goal to get us to. We have over 1.1 million items in our collection. It's physical items that we're tracking and keeping care of and they range from dates of 1846 to yesterday publication. We have just shy of half a million e-materials. This is a growing collection and we're just at a point where Wichitaans are about to hit the 50% mark of monthly circulations being e-content. One of the things I want to mention to you all about this is the challenge we have at meeting popular demand in multiple formats. So Prince Harry's new book was published in January, hugely popular. We bought something like 22 copies of that book, physical copies. We bought e-copies, we bought e-audio, large print as well. The e-books themselves, though, we have to lease them for either 12 months or 24 months. They range in cost from $50 to $150 where the print copy costs $24.99. So that's going to be a budgetary matter that we're continuing to pay attention to, but the publishing company has its own ideas about how always available digital copies should be charged. So we've got 1.639 million checkouts across all of our library locations at varied degrees, over 6,100 computer uses. Right now, one of the things to also note is that Wi-Fi use in our facilities is exceeding fixed station PCs. So our community is really leaning on us to provide quality, high-speed internet. We have 26,000 people attend programs. Part of our funding and philosophy really in the library is we share. And so we share with libraries outside of our library system all throughout the United States. We borrowed half as many as we loaned and we had over 1,300 curbside pickup appointments at Rockwell and Westlake. So here's a snapshot of our funding. Really, the majority of our funding comes from the city. This year, we actually exceeded $10 million, which is incredible for Wichita Public. We are reliant completely on our foundation, the Wichita Public Library Foundation, for two prongs of support. One is collaborative grant writing, which we received $171,000 last year and also continued endowment distributions. This helps to provide like the margin of gap between what the city's funds do and what the library's mission asks it to accomplish. So your funding, our funding goes to spaces, the staff, the utilities, really the operational costs. Those other funding streams help us with innovation, some technology. All of our public programming is funded through, through grant dollars. This was something that came up in 2021 and we're recalculating for 2022, but the Urban Library Council came up with a business value calculator for how public libraries are contributing to the small business and entrepreneurial spirits of its community. We were over $14.78 million in what we were able to do in support of folks in our community with training and education, research, even using our physical spaces. So our collaboration rooms are in high demand with people who are having business meetings, doing job interviews, doing their own small business accounting. And also, we have a foundation center, which has been hugely popular with individuals and entrepreneurs to seek additional funding for, for startup and ongoing costs. As an organization, we have five divisions, collection development, so they oversee all of the incoming and outgoing materials over those million items. We have our customer service division that oversees our branch services, circulation and interlibrary loan at the advanced learning library. Digital services, which provides incredible training and programming and support for upcoming Affordable Connectivity Program activities. Engagement and education, which oversees our youth and adult programming as well as teens and how we engage community members who aren't necessarily coming to our libraries regularly. And we have to have support, so we have support services for our facility's payroll and all the things, all the things they do. We had this last year, just in my first year, trying to get a gauge on where our branch master plan was at in COVID and picking up, our services stopped during COVID, which was an awful experience for us as library staff and community. But as we've come back from COVID, we're really looking at how we can reimagine our services in a way that makes some structural and important differences to make sure that our money stretches as far as possible and that we're still a valued space, place with people. So we have a number of planning things that came together this last year that were helpful in establishing our priorities for this year and to the next couple. First, the branch master plan, which we're going to be concluding. We did a SOAR assessment that actually sprawled out a couple of different projects, including some work with staff engagement and communication priorities. We have 111 FTE across the library and making sure that we're all as knowledgeable as possible is incredibly important. Also investing in the staff and their skills and knowledge and ability. It helps to keep your community nimble. There was a racial equity assessment that happened in combination with protocols for culturally responsive organizations. That set about a five-year plan for the library to be adapting job descriptions, the way that we're programming for the public. Our collections will be audited to see how diverse they are and are they reflective of our community's language and other needs. We did a journey mapping to make sure people are able to roam our spaces as successfully as possible. We have some community engagement efforts that are going to be happening. Actually, I want to invite you with the Westlink project, I think we've pinpointed February 22nd and 23rd to have some program design conversations about the expanded Westlink library. Then we'll be back, that group will be back in March, mid-March to do some more work. And the idea with the Westlink project and its community engagement is that the library is going to learn some skills and techniques that we'll be able to replicate at Alfred Rockwell and Angelo. We also plan this year to get into a strategic planning process to get beyond spaces and really into the programmatic space. I anticipate that Wichitaans, from what they've said in the past, they might not want something too much different than what we have. They keep asking for more and more and more. And so we're going to have to really discern what does that mean and how do we do it responsibly? And then, of course, any and all city-county plans that intersect community, education, literacy, house, housing and health are things that we're constantly paying attention to as we adapt our services. So we've got four branch remodels that are on their way in the next two years, really excited about this. We've got a little bit of information out at Westlink right now, but we're really going to be ramping up a lot of engagement this spring. This is a snapshot of the floor plan of what the double space could potentially look like and we're refining and getting into all the details at this point. But through the 22 to 25, we have really staff three initiatives that are driving our work. We want to advance equity, diversity and inclusion, grow our cardholders and connect with the library outside of the library and the structure and then foster a culture that engages and develops our staff and inspires them in service to community. I think that one's a really important point because libraries as an institution, when we think of libraries, we think of books in a building and we think of guardians of information in the library and as the person who you have to keep happy or she won't give you the books. We're different now. Libraries have modernized. Libraries are beyond the space and we really have to pay attention to our staff's capabilities in that funding. 66% of our funding from the city supports library staff. And we've been doing a lot of work to invest in, in training paths and pathways to make sure that their orientation is simply what does Wichita need? What is Wichita asking for? And then what do we do about that? So what we decided this last year to do is to engage our library board, your appointed representatives, and they bravely demonstrated leadership by jumping in and looking at what is our new mission at the Wichita Public Library. It's four words. It's to connect, discover, learn and thrive. This embodies everything that a library could imagine for its community or a space where you can come and connect any of your community. It could be your family, your friends, your church group, people who care about the same initiatives. What can we learn? What can we do together and how do we make sure that our community is thriving? This is our new webster, our new mascot. He's going to be showing up a lot through the next couple of years. But in addition to the mission, we updated our vision. And I worked with Paul Hawkins from the South Central Kansas Library System to guide the board through a thought process to get us started and then also to make sure that we were embedded, all of the thinking that they wanted to convey. And the idea of the library being limitless was something that was really powerful. And so our new vision statement is to be inclusive, responsive, collaborative. Your library makes your community limitless. So with that, I think is we're going to see a lot more just adjustments to services going forward and different ways that we're going to engage. But one of the policies that we didn't have was a values policy. And so our library staff and board collaborated on three distinct values that are in addition to what the city of Wichita holds true, and that's community, diversity and opportunity. I think one of the things that's really different about these policies from the previous ones, these are active, they're dynamic, they're asking us to stretch. One of the comments from the staff, which was really telling, but also a really great challenge is, ooh, this means that we have to do a lot. Are we ever going to achieve this? That's really scary and we're putting a mark out there that we're going to strive at it. We're not going to be perfect. We're going to try our best and hopefully over time we'll see that the library becomes a more embedded thought in people's minds. Before I go on, one thing I wanted to mention, our leadership team just completed a book discussion, "When Librarians Lead, the Toughest Challenges Get Solved." So we, it's really cute, right? When we were talking about like, where do we go from here? We've got new mission, vision, values. Where are we going? And ultimately, I think what we're striving to do right now, if we encounter anybody, actually, let me start with this. I'm going to tell you something really vulnerable. I haven't completed reading a book in the last year. I haven't. For any number of reasons, I haven't been able to finish a book. I'm kind of curious in this space, who has a library card? Okay, let's all get library cards and I'm going to challenge myself to finish a book this year, but one of the things, I did finish this one, actually, I have to say. One of the things that we were talking about with this was like, what's the change that we want to see? And what we continually hear is that I had no idea my library did that. We have a huge kitchen sink of opportunities and ways that we can help support the community, but when you don't think about the library, you don't know. So what we want to see is that the mindset goes from instead of not knowing, that we want people to think about, I wonder if my library has. I wonder if my library does. And even if we don't, we work as hard as we can to never say no. So we're going to know who to refer you to, how to get connected. And these are all the staff who do that. We have a really great team of paraprofessionals and professionals. Right now, the way that we're staffed, there are two professional salaried positions within seven like library locations for every open hour that we're open. We're primarily run by paraprofessional staff and with that, more than 60% of them are part-time, which means that they aren't earning retirement benefits or healthcare benefits. But looking at what this next year is like, the library is for everyone, is a, is a marketing campaign that we'll be doing. We want to make sure that everyone feels welcome. If you're a reader, if you're an adventurer, if you're a dad of two girls. Looking at our services, though, with our mission in mind, connecting, this last year, we introduced a story walk and we'll be doing five more this next year. We have all the supplies and we just need the logistical operations in mind to get those. And we introduced e-cards for students in USD 259. Over 15,000 students received a, a library card by just registering in the schools. This next year, elementary school students will be participating, so we'll have over 44,000 students immediately having access to the library. We get outside of the building. We're going to be installing 26 little free libraries this month in District Three. Evergy's volunteers helped to paint them. Ed Hutton Construction has built them. We've got a lot of in-kind work happening, including WSU's engineering students. Do you guys remember the preschool barn? When you open it up and it says moo? These will, when they open up, they'll actually say the letter of the alphabet with different, different words that denote the letter A, A, apple, A, because phonetical and letter, letter recognition are two of the most important things that kids need in order to be ready to read. So these are outfitted for early learning excitement. We've got a lot of really great community partners and we're excited to see those launch in addition to a bookmobile, hopefully this summer. Don't know exactly when, but we've got all the plans in place to be able to take the library to community events, parks, partners, schools, low-income lunch sites and essentially be able to take all the books on the road. One thing too, with your library card, once you get it, you'll be able to sign up for LinkedIn Learning, which is a new way that we're able to connect with education. It's thousands and thousands and thousands of quality professional training about technology, creative skills, business, even HR matters. In our discovery kind of concept, things like bringing in a portable planetarium allowed people this summer to be able to see the stars in the daytime. We have great collections that people can browse and take a look at. We have a number of activities where we bring together experts to be able to share and, and help people discover new information. Under the learning arm, one of the most valuable and incredible things I think that we do is called Book a Librarian. Every month, we support about 290 individual appointments where if you're struggling, struggling with anything, you have a question, you've got a new device, somebody gave you some bad information, we can book time with a librarian up to an hour where we'll be able to help guide you and navigate you to a successful next step. We just finished our COVID story, which many of you participated in, but learning about what's going on now and being able to document it for the future, I think was really insightful of our library staff. And then, of course, this last year, we had a lot of, a lot of challenges and dialogue about what books are right for whom. And your public library had a campaign during banned books week to indicate that it's important for everyone to have access and the public library is the place to do that. So we've got tons and tons of learning experiences, anatomical models now, science kits, bilingual stories and programs. Most of our promotions this year you'll see are, are in English and Spanish. And with thriving, my goodness, thank you so much for supporting Fine Free. We've heard nothing but positive things from community members who were so excited to be able to be welcomed back to the library. This was an incredible, incredible step and we're really grateful for your support. One of the things too, I wanted to, in conclusion, this little guy, he, he's not very verbal at home. We were able to get a grant from the United Way with, to be able to bring in these giant from the United Way with, to be able to bring in these giant blocks, which is just creative free play for kiddos. Engineering, they actually, like, learn frustration resilience because things tipple over, and then they have to be teamwork players. But he, um, his mom said that he's not very verbal, and when he came, he was so delighted, like, the spark came on, and he kept rushing over to her to tell her exactly what he was planning to do. And so those kind of moments, I think, um, happen at a macro, a micro scale in every library location that we have, and we're going to be doing it outside of our buildings. Um, I think that's it. So I wonder if you have any questions for me?
All right, any questions?
I don't have a question. Well, I do, but comment. That was awesome. I'd love to see everything that we're doing. Do you, do you remember that series, like, The More You Know? Like, if we did something like that, to your point that you made, there's so many things that folks don't know about, like, a Did You Know? Something that we could put on the library page, or just cool stuff like that?
Yeah, I think one of the steps to that point that we're doing this year, we're putting in a lot of our state aid funding to promote and do more advertising. Um, we're partnering with PBS to do viewpoints with, um, Dennis Quaid, um, to promote how, how the support that we've gotten through the Branch Master Plan is helping to propel forward the quality of life in Wichita. I think we've been doing some direct mailers, but yeah, I think this is one where it's going to take a collective effort for, for anyone who loves, admires, or just, um, sees the benefit of the library to remember, to remember us.
Awesome. Well, great presentation, and my four-year-old daughter loves the, uh, the Advanced Learning Center, and just realized the other day that those were trees, and she was just standing there, Dad, it's a tree. So it's just a great place.
Also, great job. Uh, the first slide with all the data, I thought was amazing. I sent you an email during it and said, could you send us that PowerPoint? Because I think I'm going to do my next newsletter on all of that data, because that's not something I've seen before, and it's really impressive, and I think we definitely can let the community know all the great work the library does. So, thank you. Great, great job always, but great job today.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Um, great job as well. We were in Topeka. Um, they, we were talking about fentanyl, and, um, a couple people made the comment about, um, was the library, you can help me out on this, they would talk, ask if you guys had access to, um, some of the kits that Safe Streets was putting out. I didn't know if you could speak to that, or what you guys are doing, if there's something that we could do to try to help you guys.
Yeah, I think, uh, our leadership team got a presentation from the fire department about Narcan and how to administer and what that could look like. We've put together a tentative plan, and we're pursuing the supplies, and then we'll train the staff. Um, one of the things that was really important was, um, you know, just both for public safety and staff safety, the, like, how invasive that is, is incredible, and it's quite scary. Um, I think we're also partnering with a number of organizations to bring together some information, community information sessions, and then using our position as a purveyor of information to make sure that we're, we're part of the, the collective voice to raise awareness around it.
Awesome. Well, if there's anything that we can do, um, we just did, uh, gave Safe Streets the grant, and I know that they have kits and stuff, so if there's anything that we can do to help you guys, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we've discussed it a little bit before, but you guys actually do undergo some CIT training, um, correct, just to deal with, um, some of the people that you see outside the libraries. Um, yeah, so I appreciate all the work you guys are doing as far as that is concerned. Um, there's a couple of branches out there that their hours are a little shorter than the others. Um, do we have, um, the plans to possibly expand those? I know that's one of the things I hear quite a bit about the Walters branch.
Yeah, I think we hear the same about, um, the Angelo and Walters branch. As our neighborhood branches, as they're currently defined, they have a smaller, um, some, smaller service population, and by policy, it's interesting, they, they actually say that we're intending to meet popular demand of library materials. That seems a little outdated based on the social services needs and the historic, um, gap in service that we've been seeing. So the library's been preparing, and we'll, we'll talk with our library board in a couple of weeks about several program options that can, um, establish a new staffing model that we've not done yet here in Wichita before, as it relates to our neighborhood branches, who are coincidentally positioned in two of our most diverse economically challenged neighborhoods. So I think you're going to see a little bit of story difference between Walters, where there's exceeding demand right now, and Angelo, where we really need to do some trust building, um, with the community and better understand, um, where those connections are, and hopefully, um, improve service access.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. One final question. Um, what letter am I getting?
Oh, I wish it was either M or H, but hopefully, you're okay with the letter Y?
That's right, hey, that's a unique one.
You know, what's been interesting about this project is everybody loves, okay, I'll have a little free library, yeah, and then they move. Oh, my gosh. So we've been really struggling. We've had some people kind of back out quickly, so, yeah.
As long as we can help get the books out there.
Yeah, exactly. And I should say with that, um, Evergy's grant is supplying brand-new copies of material. We have a number of other grant sources that are, are going to keep us stocked, and then, um, I believe our Friends of the Library are also donating, um, donated books, and we're focusing on early learning, parenting, um, ideally to any of our partners within the Wichita Literacy Coalition. We'll use these as an outpost for distributing their materials, kindergarten readiness. Um, and then ideally, the neighborhoods actually take ownership of, of, and we're going to see a lot of books being traded around, so.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have any, uh, comments? Any, uh, council member announcements? Yeah, I'll take executive privilege here, uh, show off my, my gear here. Um, Chief Sullivan, I hate to say this, I, I like you a lot, but, um, eagles are going down. Um, yeah, go Chiefs. And everybody, regardless of who you're rooting for or what you do, please make sure you, um, you drive safely, don't drink and drive, um, no amount of celebrations worth losing your license, your life, anything like that, or somebody else's life. So, uh, please be safe, and, yeah, like Councilmember Ballard said, go Chiefs. All right, thank you.